It's.
What?
And then.
I like all those colors.
They just have it.
This time we'll call the meeting order. My friend.
Great. Our Father in Heaven, Lord, we thank you for this evening. Thank you for this opportunity that the servants of our community have to meet together and go about the business of the city. Lord, I thank you for the commissioners. I thank you for the employees of the city and their hard work on behalf of the citizens. Lord, I just ask you bless their efforts. Bless this meeting tonight, and may your spirit guide everybody's heart here. In Jesus' name, we ask these things. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as.
There any changes to the agenda?
No.
I entertain a motion to approve these.
So.
The move by Commissioner Bell and second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to public comments. This is a time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. Of course, if you state your name and address, speak respectfully, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone in the public? No one online? Moving on to the discussion agenda, City Firework Display with Dan Heist.
Thank you for allowing me to hurry and get in the meeting. One thing I wanted to check with, if it's all possible, was looking at for the fees that are collected for the, I think there's two stands in town that pay for the city fees. I was wanting to see if there's any way possible that we could earmark that to go straight to where the city just went. If I got the numbers right, I think it's twenty-four hundred. And most of that money is coming from the Big Ten. So if I just thought I'd check and see if it's possible to help with the funds.
Can you tell me what you mean? Do you mean like the taxes?
It's where they pay the, not, they pay a fee to have a license there in town. And it's based off of, I remember I'd swear footage. So I know KJ can do it. That's probably not too much, but it's the Big Ten that comes from, I say it's J's fireworks, but it's also fireworks. And they're out of town and pretty much the employees that work there are all out of town. I don't know who they are or anything like that, but I'm just trying to see if there's any ways specifically since it was for fireworks, if it could be applied to to the fireworks display.
But there any reason why they couldn't be like from a?
Okay.
Did the fees from the other fireworks stands go towards that?
No, now, not, not outside city limits. There's not. There just, there's only, I think, there are only two in town inside the city limits.
Those are the only two.
I believe.
And the city usually puts what, towards fireworks?
Pretty.
So we wouldn't ask for the five, we'd just take.
Is the city licensed?
I mean.
The, the vendor permit in the city license, yeah, they have to, they have to get that permit to set other fireworks in the case.
So it's money we collect.
I like blowing stuff up, so I'm not sure that I'm in partial. Voice.
I think it's a nice use of funds for the, I mean, just go over the general fund otherwise.
And then if there would be more fireworks stands in town, then in the future, those fees, but also then we'd be committing to those going towards that as well, correct?
And we'd probably, we'd probably ask, ask Dan or whoever runs the fireworks display to come in and request that each year, just to make sure that we know where it's going. So we wouldn't automate, we'd have to come in and request. Okay, so we're doing that annually, basically.
For trying to get another stand in town, it's pretty hard, just for some fact of buying location and and then the competition here.
And what does our five hundred dollar donation typically go towards? Is it towards the purchase of fireworks? And then those fireworks that you purchase for this, they're at cost, right? Or, or, I mean, for that production?
Yeah, that's, everything's applied for that production. And what it is, it goes into, like, there's a, a checking account that just says city fireworks. Donations to go that, that used to pay the insurance, it pays for the fireworks. Putting on fireworks.
What is the cost every year to put on the fireworks show?
Last year, I want to pick between like sixty-eight to eight thousand. But this year, I was, I can tell you right now, it's gonna be a lot more than that.
Is that just due to prices? Prices of fireworks have gone up, is that why?
No.
You're increasing the amount? Okay.
And that will be, I'll make an announcement in June for what it's gonna be.
Yeah.
It's because it's something that we've been planning on for two years, so.
So for the other two stands, what do we, do we know what the total cost? I didn't know, I'm curious. Can we figure out what the, that fee would be for the other two stands, so we know?
There's a twenty-four hundred.
Oh, sorry, that twenty-four hundred is, is what we've left off of all the permits for all the stands in town. Would it be paying whatever we get this year? So like, we get it this year and then pay it, so if the big ten doesn't come, is that, or are we doing it because we did before?
I would say this, this year. The big ten's gonna come unless, of course, we have a burn ban and then there will probably be a fireworks show anyway. We just, I know the, the group that runs it, who they are, they're gonna continue to come back. I'd be shocked if they did.
How, how early do it? I mean, so that, I think that's a good logistical question then. So like, though, how, how soon do we get those permits? And is that quick enough turnaround time, or does it make sense to do last year's for this year?
I feel like we don't normally pay it overly, like anyways, maybe not even before you've done the fireworks in the past.
Show, yeah, I, I don't send the bill or, or whatever it is to that fund until after the fourth.
Yeah, so, I mean.
Yeah, because.
Wait, if we wanted to do this year's for.
I guess I was saying, like, when, if I'm, if I'm the Big Ten, when do I submit that fee? When do I pay the city?
They submit it pretty early.
Okay, so we, even then, then we, we just don't make sense to do this year, to pay this year?
Yeah, I mean, they're probably gonna have next, next month.
I'm saying, no, it's in May when they do it.
So it's not like we're getting it on Jul- July 2nd, we need to pay it out July 3rd, we'll have some time to.
Yeah, it's, it's like, I don't finalize everything up until after the fourth. Now, the insurance will be done before that, but we'll be minding the count and figuring that.
But that'll still give you enough time to know you've had that money coming in and in order. She's playing there, yeah.
It, it's just to help out because, you know, we're gonna really push this year to try and get more donations and stuff like that, so like, it, it, it's no problem if it's July 5th, July 6th, it's.
Well, I've really enjoyed being at the last few years.
This is on the special agenda. Do we need a formal motion then? So it's in the minutes, so remember what we did last year.
Get it down to the action agenda. Makes sense.
Or if you want to, if you want to take an action right now, you can do.
So the motion then would be to authorize the city manager to pay the amount collected in vendor fees towards the Concordia City.
Fire, fireworks vendor permit fees from this year, twenty twenty-three toward the twenty twenty-three fireworks show, city fireworks show.
Good.
Yeah, sounds good. I'll make that motion.
Move by Commissioner Wentz and second by Commissioner Bellton to do what Amy said. Allocate the funds, receive fiscal year twenty-three towards the twenty-three city fireworks display.
Okay, I have one question, you know, before the, does that include the five hundred we've already?
So that.
Earmarked for that?
That replacement will happen in five, it's, it's coming through the, I don't want to get too greedy with this. The twenty-four degree.
Let me be part of the motion. That would be helpful for us.
I'd like to take an amendment to the motion to uh, eliminate the five hundred dollars previously allocated.
Okay. Then moved by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz for the amended motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Okay, great, thank you. There's one other quick thing, though, wanted to see about this year, but.
You're gonna ask for that five hundred now, aren't you?
No, it's not monetary, but it, it want to tie in the, I suppose, with the city street department, um, like the road bear cage, is that what they are? Wanted to see if there's any way that we can use them out there this year, so some of the help, don't have to drive stakes in the ground.
That's fine. If you just let me know how big of an area you need, bigger you know.
Well, we try to wrap up. We got a, a circle we have to go by, and it just, some of that we use where the trap range is, we use that, but it's right on the west side and will be some on the north side. Same take, yeah, I'm sure I didn't get an idea. I thought it might be a lot simpler and faster for us, because last year we had a hard time driving them in, and we had to use a crew mix truck on some of the stuff to pull out. Except for ourselves.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Moving on to the action agenda, then the minutes of the April fifth, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
I'm going to for the months of April fifth, twenty-three, second.
The move by Commissioner Jackson, second by Commissioner Hutchinson, to approve the minutes of the April fifth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to appropriation ordinance number seven.
I have a question. Just out of curiosity, I hadn't thought of about it before, but on our fuel costs, do like for our vehicles, do we have a preset agreement with someone? Do we, how, how do we? I mean, I know we do on that.
Do you mean to deliver it, or?
Well, like your vehicles, the city vehicles. You have a.
We get bulk fuel to the shop.
Yeah, and then you, then you fill it. I just noticed some fuel charges.
Yeah, if you go fill up at the pump, I think the only thing is they take the
Tax of the city tax.
Not anymore, or you, and I think it comes off the bill itself. Uh, I know for sure that we get twenty cents a gallon excise tax taken off, I think it's excise tax, and they do that on the bill um, with the bulk fuel. And it used to be at the pump that way too, but it's not. And they called me one day, and I, I think they say they do that on the bill too.
So do you, you, you don't bid that out as to what fuel company can get it from?
I don't, I don't know how that came about. I've been with them for years. I don't know.
Or you just buy it from the same one?
Okay, yeah.
Does.
Do you think it makes sense to bid it out, or?
Well, I don't know how much, I mean, the bills are small. Were.
How many other local fuel companies are?
Yeah, I mean, there may only be one.
And there's Jerus, so I almost think like, I almost think when I first came here, somebody was bringing it from out of town. I don't know, I can't remember. But I don't know who else we delivered. You know?
No, I've just been drawing the CBA, just because it's the same people that have been using.
Yeah, I, like I said, I was curious, because I thought if we spend quite a bit of money on fuel for vehicles and fire trucks.
Right.
Ambulances.
I think they electronically monitor it, so they know when.
Oh, when your fuel, fuel tanks empty.
The shop has the airport Brian automatically orders when he, when we track it.
Yeah.
He orders it when it gets to a certain point.
And where does he order his from? CBA still?
No, that's fuel, that's a jet fuel.
Put down, give me a picture of the place you're shopping. Down, bring a trip somewhere down there.
Yeah. Jet fuel.
Yes. Thank you. I move to approve appropriation ordinance number seven.
The move by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Bellton to approve appropriation ordinance number seven. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to ordinance twenty twenty-three thirty-two hundred.
Thank you, commissioners. We sold the short segment of natural gas line to the North Development, and with that comes, uh, the need to withdraw from Kansas Municipal Gas Association membership. The only reason we were a member with them is because we owned and operated that line, and it allowed us access to them to be able to purchase that, that, that fuel from them. Um, per the agreement that we had signed back in two thousand and thirteen, which is, it's, it's kind of confusing. I must have taken a little bit of research, and I got some information directly, and the agreement that at the top is dated nineteen and ninety, but the signature page is twenty thirteen is what we got back from K M G A. So as far as we can tell, we signed a signature page that agreed to that old agreement, that was the original membership agreement that every other community's ever agreed to. According to that, we have to pass an ordinance or a resolution withdrawing our membership. So that's what this action would be, would be to withdraw our membership from K M G A. We don't see any need to, to retain that membership for anything else that, that we, that we're operating or doing for the city.
And again, there's no penalty for that. No penalty.
I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three thirty-two hundred.
So move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Jackson to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three thirty-two hundred. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to manager reports.
Managerial reporters, I have, I have nothing to share this evening. We've been running, it's just been a continuation of the work that we've been doing for the last, last couple of weeks. More work on housing and more work on all those types of things. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Stack reports?
So fire department got the opportunity to go mutual aid with Jamestown, um, again, in their district for Jamestown marsh, north fires, we're recalling this one. Um, we ended up having five counties involved in this one. Thirty-six different departments, sixty-six emergency response vehicles, about eighty-five fire personnel. Second time in my life, I forgot to call in an actual air tanker. Who would have thought it gets to twice in a couple of years? Um, so far, the estimated cost for buying that fire, just so you know, is about a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. And that's without the air tanker doing its drops. And we called in a hot shot crew out of Wichita. They came up and assisted, and then as soon as they were done here, they went to Haddon for the rest of the week. And this may be being looked at as going into a disaster, so we'll be right on that, trying to collect some of that R funds for the city back anyways. So we'll be monitoring that. Fire was started by somebody that was burning, uh, without an appropriate permit. The chief in that area had a burn ban going on. So I don't know if the county attorney or public county is gonna do anything about it or not. Then we will work on it and see if we can get any money back. And I think the forestry service is gonna try to lump us with Haddon and Manhattan's fire, if they've been fired the past few days. So we'll see what we can do to get some of that back, but it is a great mutual aid, and it was a, everything went good. Got a little bit scary a few times, but everyone stayed safe. Any questions?
Other staff reports? None?
I can do that now. I mean, I wasn't going to really discuss anything, and it's going well, and I would just say the, at the end, there is the sales tax report for the first quarter, and we are sixty-one thousand four hundred ahead of last year, which was also a record year, so. But other than that, everything's out of expected.
Why do we still have money that tipped on?
Uh, back taxes. We'll get every year, and we're able to use those, um, on any project that we've done in the fifth district in, within twenty years from the date of the project. So we are also, for the next four years, we'll still get, um, I haven't, I haven't turned in for yet this year, but um, we get money from the Dollar Tree back from Kansas Gas every year, so that'll also go in there, so we'll use it again on any project. So I would think what our plan is, is to wait until the end of that, in a period, and hopefully our back taxes will be done, and we can figure out what to use that last, last little money on.
Yeah. Yes? Major comments? Major Hutchinson?
Um, I've spent some nights at the ball field, and so I know a lot of folks in this room are helpful with the turf project, and it's beautiful. It's really nice to see that project done, and it gets my husband home a half hour earlier. Kids don't have to work the fields. I also appreciate that. Thank you, everybody.
Um, I've been noticing, oh, there's been a, a lot of, of community participation in the citywide cleanup, and so that's really good to see. Um, people are utilizing that resource, which is a wonderful resource, in my opinion, that's provided by the city.
Because what are our baseball softball members look like? Do you have the, are they?
Pretty normal, uh, maybe just a ditch up on baseball and T-ball, and then about twelve short on softball over last year, so pretty, pretty normal still.
So we still need all that staff to be able to make the rec program run smoothly? Thank you.
Marshall?
Give us that one more question for Amy. You have an agency fund called Central Cottage.
Oh, oh, central garage.
Our garage, yeah. I, I put an X over it.
Ask your new city shop, and every quarter, we take all of the expenses from the shop and distribute them to the different general fund department based on use. So it's really just a passive thing.
Thank you.
Uh, really common idea, uh, that I have, uh, is really to tail into, or head on to the, uh, citywide cleanup. I think it's a fantastic, uh, resource. Obviously, people are taking advantage of it. Uh, the person that, that talked with me thought it would be a good idea to figure out how to coordinate citywide garage sale to dovetail with citywide cleanup. Then maybe after everybody has their garage sale and sells whatever they need to, they can just leave it on the curb to get rid of it, just to help clean up more stuff from the city. Uh, so I said, I would be happy to pass that along. I don't know that there's a formal organization for citywide garage sales.
Not sugar organized, is that what you think? Take that under.
Move more stuff on, less stuff to, although I've seen some non-city vehicles being fairly active in the acquisition of new materials, so. A lot of good spare tires. All right, at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to a study session.
I move to adjourn to a study session to discuss new activities. Second.
The move by Commissioner Bellton, second by Commissioner Jackson to adjourn to the study session. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.
We're gonna take a couple minutes and reset and add some tables up here, so if you guys get a break, we can do that. I'm gonna get your guys' help to bring free tables and chairs. Well, various commissioners, uh, we've got our representatives from U S D three 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 here to come back and visit a little bit about a possible abilities partnership. We've got kind of a concept, um, up on the screen. It was in your packet. There were two different versions, but this is the one that we're, we're choosing to start with up here for, to help facilitate the discussion. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Free, those, you're ready to kind of kick us off and kind of walk through the discussion.
Well, thank you, guys, uh, so much for your time again. Uh, we visited a little bit in, uh, July. I think it's been about two years, uh, well over two years since we had this conversation before. Uh, this is not a pitch at all. Uh, this is a draft, um, of, of a conversation that I, we just wanted to open up with you guys. Um, to facilitate, to facilitate our needs at, at the school district level, and according to just your high school. We made it known, uh, last time, again, this meant really to accomplish anything that we need to accomplish from a school district perspective, um, from a bond campaign is real, is pretty much reliant on, on the ability to also, with your sales tax. Uh, the rationale for that is, is in the handouts, I just handed out to you, and I'll kind of jump through that, uh, just a little bit, but I don't know if I was extremely clear in that last time. We focused a lot on the tangible pieces of the community facility group together last time, and then we, we brought you a, a drawing of, to give us a blessing to report and, and issue bonds. What I want to do with this conversation is help you, you know, we, we haven't gotten together with the community facility committee, what we've heard from the community facility committee, and our, or what we hear from the community, rather, following the failing of the bond was, uh, we don't run any taxes, and it's too athletic heavy. following the failing of the bond was uh we don't run any taxes and it's too athletic heavy. And so those were the 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 big things that we heard um in the conversation. Uh I, everybody did agree, however, uh you know, ninety percent agreed that we needed to do something. Nobody wanted to pay for it, uh taxes, and then also it was too athletic heavy. So those were the things we heard. Uh so again, the challenge that we have in front of us and it's it's important that you guys note that too, that's while this project begin, looks like it had athletics on it. Uh that's because that is a need. So I I know there's individuals that think it's, we we don't need just that we have a gym that's outdated and and systematically not case approved uh to host postseason events. And so we're trying to mitigate that. Some of the processes that we've done over the last couple of years is there, we're doing as as we speak and will take place here later in May is padding the entire gym. We don't have enough space on the outside baseline. Uh so it makes it unsafe. We didn't really address that so much in this in this first uh conversation. Uh the challenge really in in addition to that is the ADA accessibility. We're trying to fix the ADA accessibility by just making it a top load gym. And so we're not going to be able to access from the bottom uh anymore. We're just gonna close off those stairways. One, because they're not accessible and and they're literally a hazard. Uh we've had too many individuals tumble down those. We don't, uh we certainly don't want to do that anymore. So um that is kind of the overall piece. I I don't want to get too much into weeds on that, but I did want to just to start with the the first page in your handout. Um and this is the, this is data prepared by Dustin Navy. You guys work with Dustin Navy uh at part for your body council as well. He's very well known for school, they can pick canvas as well, maybe that's a quality. Chancellor Arthur, the bond issue ran in in this area. He's had something to do with it in his team. With Piper Sandler, uh does a great job of of giving us conservative estimates on what we anticipate mill rates to be, what we anticipate costs to be, and he uses real data. Your data's in here as far as the city sales tax and what that it is. So what I wanted to do is just give you concepts to wrap your brain around uh what our board is facing. And I, again, I want to thank John for for being here in the back. He's just recovered from some hip surgery. So if he gets up, um he's not really ready to whack me, but he he needs to stretch a little bit every once in a while. So he'll stand up and if he does have something to say, he will, he will jump in and and say it. But I appreciate him being here. Um so from from a perspective, and uh I don't want to be too elementary on this uh with you, if you understand spreadsheets, but I also don't believe any stone unturned if it's not making sense to you. So just for a perspective, um looking at a twenty million dollar bond without any sales tax. And what I illustrate this to is this could be a could be a potential solution for us if if we do decide to go without a sales tax. We obviously don't have a thirty, we don't have the capacity for thirty million. But on twenty million dollar sales tax or twenty million dollar bond issue over twenty five years without sales tax, we're looking at almost a twelve mil increase, so eleven point seven mils. That is pretty significant. Um and we were approaching that twelve mil mark uh on our last project, the forty eight million dollar project. I felt good about our last project because I felt like that reset the clock on the building for fifty years. Twenty million, uh if we just did twenty million dollars of previous that high school building and and issued that out over twenty five years in in ten years, uh whether it's this superintendent or no, she'll just be coming to you and or probably going to our voters, trying to figure out how we're gonna manage the other, the other ailments of that building, uh because it's it's not gonna necessarily establish that for for a fifty year fix. And so I just wanna, I want to illustrate that, that that's a twelve mil increase and that's covering very little of the need of of the district. You know, at thirty mil, if we try to do this all on our own without the sales tax component, we're looking at eighteen mil increase. We're sitting right now at forty six point seven, so eighteen mil increases is a pretty substantial amount. That would put us far above um our peers from a school district perspective on the mill rate. Now, if we take a look at it on a thirty million dollar bond with a similar component like we had last time, this ninety ten percent, ninety percent goes to the school district bond. Ten percent goes to fulfilling the need of of city infrastructure, whether that be streets, whether that be water treatment, whatever the city deems as a as a need, that ten percent would go uh to the city. That drops us down to uh four point four seven nine mils. Um that's a little bit more of a uh something that we feel we can handle. And then um after our conversations before, I know there was hesitance uh with the commission having a a twenty five or thirty year commitment on the sales tax. And so I also wanted to draw up what it would look like um with a thirty million dollar project over twenty five years. But the one percent sales tax uh would be front loaded only last ten years. Does that make sense to everybody? So you see uh four different scenarios there, and this is not, we need to take this scenario to this scenario. This is just there, there's a lot of different ways this could look. If we could extend our terms at thirty, we can lower our term to twenty, we could look at some different options. But again, uh I want to just give you guys some perspective um on what our board has looked at um over the last year trying to adapt uh the needs of the school district uh to make it fit in the box. And really, there wasn't any magic um to come in with thirty million. We just knew we needed to get it lower. So we tried to set our sights on a thirty million dollar project. And that's how we came up with those numbers. It's it's very arbitrary, but what we tried to do is box in or back into this thirty million, see what we can accomplish. Uh we're not dress addressing every every handicap need necessarily. We're addressing most of them. Not addressing every single one. Uh we're addressing, I mean, we're addressing about forty five percent um of our of our HVAC system. We're gonna address probably, uh I would say ninety percent of our electrical challenges. Uh we will be addressing uh I guess, the cosmetic appearance on the inside of the high school. All the rooms are gonna, not all the rooms, probably ninety five percent of the rooms are gonna get touched uh with sheet rock and paint and updates and flooring and those kind of things. But we are not gonna be able to update like auditorium. We're not gonna be able to, none of this includes the thirty million dollar price. I didn't include anything with exterior. So stuff pointing the brick, uh cleaning up into the stone, there are those things were addressed. Uh we addressed windows, um so windows would be addressed. Um so there is, there's some give and take on that to try to fit uh to try to fit in that mold. But again, I wanted to just give you kind of a a brief outline of what that looked like. And and I guess what we would be gaining and what we've been sacrificing a little bit. On the, on the same note, we know um that I am coming to you guys um very humbly, having this conversation because we know what a piece that the sales tax is, and that's why we wanted to have the the gym space on there as an attractive uh model uh for your needs as we know, whether it be the pickleball group or adult basketball, um biddy basketball, uh whatever use sport that that we have in town. Our spaces are used daily um for those, um whether it be club volleyball, club basketball. We know that, so we wanted to try to give you dedicated space and to try to make that an attractive uh piece for the city as well. And um because we know what a crucial piece of sale tax is to us being able um to complete any of the improvements that we listed there. And again, if you have any specific questions on the pink stuff on on the screen, we can try to address those uh and as much as we can. As we really talk about, um if you went to the, I think it's the third page of your document or that you hand out. You guys see this daily probably or or bi-monthly. If your return to Amber has a very good handle on this. Uh this is just Dustin's and now I've given you some a clear picture of what the data shows on sales tax inflections over the last, I guess, it's twenty eleven. And again, we're not selling, we're not trying to tell you what the rate would be. We want to be very conservative here with if we would plan on this. And we we feel like we have been pretty conservative with his estimates and and that's what he's based sales tax on to get our our property tax mill rate at the at the pieces that you've seen. On the next page, again, all this, all this data is is for you to to review and to chew on. And I know I'm, I'm, I know you're drinking from a fire hose. Our board has looked at this data for probably thirteen to fourteen months. The data shifts a little bit um as the economy changes, uh as state changes, as as new districts do, or as districts do new budgets each year, we've adapted just a little bit. Um but the mill levy comparison uh for comparable Kansas schools, again, try not to operate in a in a silo, but I also want to um just show you where we are compared to some Kansas school districts um that are a little bit uh similar to us. Edor is obviously a little bit larger. Um you know, but they're sitting at a district level of sixty five. Clearwater, very similar to our size. Uh they're sitting at fifty nine mils, Morris County. They're usually in our district football uh contests. Um Rock Creek is in our league. Wellington, uh very similar to us. Hugh B. Jones, it's it's a little bit bigger. Um they have some natural gas down there, so you're gonna see their assessed valuation jump up quite a bit above uh the rest of us. Uh Columbus, southeast of Celine, uh you see them in the highlights a lot, whether it be basketball or football or baseball, they're pretty good. Um Chaparral, absolutely important, and right next door is Boy. So just gives you some some mill levy comparison. I have some more comparisons on on the last page. The highlight where our mill rates are at. And then kind of look at our mill rate history. Um and I I hate to present all this to you and I'm like, like you don't know where to find it, because this is all all accessible, it's all public record. Um I've spent several several days and evenings and meetings over the last uh eighteen months, whether it be for rural housing incentive or whatever, we get in a conversation about taxation and whatnot, and there is some distinct confusion that that gets shared about mill rate history and those kind of things. So I want to make sure we're we're all looking at the same data as we're as we're trying to help make decisions for our community, whether it be you guys are making decisions for the city or us making decisions from a district perspective uh for our school system. But looking at our our historic mill levy um for Concordia Public Schools going back to two thousand eight, two thousand nine, we've been pretty consistent. You know, we jumped up there in twelve and thirteen, thirteen and fourteen, and that's when we passed a uh the bond issue for the for the FEMA shelter at the elementary school. Um and then really, since we've worked um since I started in this role in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, we've, we've tried to balance that uh and and keep it as low as we can. The whole purpose of trying to lower that every year um and and try to tighten our belts as much as we can uh was to prepare for something like this, um to prepare for a some kind of a bond issue so that it it doesn't look so high. So it's, it was intentional to try to try to manage our money so that we didn't have a large mill. We didn't want to be at the highest point of our history and also go back to taxpayers and ask to go higher. So um in full transparency, that that was intentional to buy that, you know, over the past several years. And uh you know, it's been effective in doing that. We've been able to maintain. I think Ashley, Chuck, I think we're involved in the in the conversations early on facility committees when we had last time, that involved a state conversation, and we know how that has all panned out and by now, we're just trying to get the legislature to pass a K twelve budget. So um state aid has not been on their radar at at all. So it's not gonna be in this session again. Seven, seven years ago, we were forty nine percent state aid. So if you're passing a thirty million dollar bond issue, fifteen million of that essentially is is covered with state aid. Um that's how the bond issue at the elementary, the elementary school work. When you, when we we did a five and a half million dollar bond issue in twenty thirteen, forty fourteen, state aid kicked in the forty nine percent of that. So really, we were only on the hook for about two, two point seven million. So our tax base only had to come up with two point seven million of those dollars. Right now, we're uh the the way the block ran originated here after twenty fifteen following some some really difficult legislations of stomach that that state aid went away. And so we are clear down uh to the to the ten, nine and ten percent range. We're down to six in twenty twenty one, uh bounced up to uh nine percent, I think, based on twenty twenty two revenues. We're gonna be at about a ten percent state aid piece. But it just gives you an example of getting I can go into a long conversation about state aid, but I don't want to worry with that. And then just for some data for just review, as as we continue to talk, the the last three um pieces you have in your spreadsheet with all the colors. This is a twenty twenty one mill rate study. I I did it in twenty eighteen and then again, did it twenty twenty one. It takes a lot of time to try to go through everybody's abstracts and find this data. Uh Dustin, Amy and his team helped me do it for twenty twenty one. And so they didn't have time to pull this all out. But I I just wanted to illustrate kind of where we are. And what I tried to do is take one, like schools and like communities like ours and put them all in the same basket together to just identify mill racing. What I mean by like, some of these districts are larger than us. Obviously, Johnson County is is a way different animal than we are. But I did want to illustrate Johnson County in the conversation because I pulled everybody that has a community college in their community. So the first column that you see there in blue is the assessed valuation of the the USD district. So that's not, uh that's not the city evaluation. So Amy and I have different assessed valuations. The school district takes up the whole school district, which encompasses our town. Uh it doesn't encompass, and then the county has a different assessed valuation. So we don't encompass the entire county either. So county's gonna have a little different assessed valuation. A city's gonna have a different assessed valuation. Our assessed valuation now in twenty twenty three bumped up to eighty, uh it bumped up to eighty million, it's at seventy five million. But so apples to apples, everybody's on the same page uh with that. Does everybody understand this assessment? How that works across municipalities. So then the next column is is what the college mill rate is, what the college uh mill late, mill levy is, what the home USD is. Some of these districts, um you know, they have multiple Dixon County, for instance, has Aviling and Chapman. And so I want to make sure you know what the home USD would be. Then you have the county, the county mill rate, you have the city mill rate. And then obviously, just uh doing a sum on the spreadsheet gives you the total mill rate. So the claim uh that I heard in in a lot of my talks with it with uh the patrons uh there two years ago was we're the highest taxed area in Kansas. And um we are not the highest taxed area because we are high. Um there's no doubt, but we are not the highest tax. And I, that it's illustrated here and in the conversation, I'm not trying to throw any of our other communities under the bus per se, um but we're just barely above Boy. And actually, they're higher than us now in twenty twenty three uh for total mill rate. Um if you look at Belleville, that are higher than us. So we're not the highest. And I just illustrated these um to give you a a gauge when you look at the total mills. If you look at us from just the assessed value range, um we are on the very low end. Um so those have, those are the community that do say that uh we are considered poor in the room with of assessed valuation. We are, but again, we're not, we're not the poorest in the area. Um we we have room to grow, certainly, uh but we're certainly not the poorest. So I just wanted to give you the assessed valuation, which is in the blue column. If you go to the next page, it's the same exact spreadsheet. I just highlighted blue, which is the home USD and the rate. And just like you saw on on uh three pages ahead of that, where our mill rate is at that forty six range. You know, we're from the lower end of what's uh our peers are doing. You know, we're we're certainly not Donovan West at thirty nine, but forty six is is very comparable and and quite a bit lower than than many of our colleagues uh around us. And a lot of that is probably due to the bond issues that they have ran in the past. Many of these uh districts have either in certainly something in the last ten years, but maybe something several of them have ran something in the last five to eight years. But that kind of gives you where we rank um from our home USD perspective. Um at that forty six mill rate compared to on the high end, Iowa, in Allen County Community College up to sixty eight mils. Um and then obviously Donovan County has a little one at thirty nine mils. It just gives you a comparison uh to mill rate. Um I understand we are a high taxed county, city area. But again, from a school district perspective, I can only control what I can control on in in my dynamic. Um and we're doing the very best that we can to do that, just as you guys are as as a city entity. Then you compare us just for your perspectives and for a city meeting, where you compare as a city. Um and again, uh this is twenty twenty one, data stuff has may have changed to twenty twenty three. You know, but again, this isn't to throw darts or throw stones anyway. This is just You know, but again, this isn't to throw darts or throw stones anyway, this is just what it is, this is this is where we are. Uh just for perspective and and Amy can correct me, but for instance, our my assessed valuation for the entire school district is. On this sheet, so seventy-five million, we're up to eighty million now for this year, one mill for you guys generates.
Thirty-one thousand.
Thirty-one thousand, so it takes it takes more thirty-one thousands. To accomplish the goals that you're trying to do, uh the same that I'm trying to do, whether it's buying a lawn mower or. Uh obviously, the fire truck is is way up there, um buying a vehicle, um. You know, one mill for us generates, so so you understand the milk piece, we have eighty million dollars in assessed valuation. That means one mill will generate eighty thousand dollars, so you have thirty-five million in assessed by risk for your cities, so one mill generate or thirty-two. Um generates that thirty-two thirty-two thousand dollars, so um it takes more of those mills. Uh to generate the same amount of dollars than maybe some of your peers do um uh across the state. But was I clear on that, does everybody understand, you know, I don't want to talk over you, but I won't talk to you either. It's anybody that hangs out a little bit with a city manager or college president, uh county commissioner, um sometimes we can talk. About people, not because we're smart, it's because we live it every day, um so that was that, so then. Uh again, um I try to defend all of our our patrons in town, whenever I'm in a conversation, somebody wants to. Um engage, I do try to interject, and I during the rural housing in the district conversation in the community, I got hit up. Be on the hospital board, I get hot hit up quite a bit, and it's not gonna be long before the hospital goes on the tax rolls and all that, so I. I defend our hospital on that and say, no, that's not, that's not accurate, that's not accurate, um I defend our college. Um I I've heard time and time again, well, the college should have been off the tax rolls years ago, and and I want to make sure we illustrate this, again, somewhere given my colleagues across town. You know, even Johnson County, if you look um in the blue column and and find Johnson County, which is the first one that has. Uh mills uh in the blue column, eight point seven mills, even the wealthiest county um in the state uh. That has a community college is issuing mills to support their community college, so. The the theory, uh the myth that. We're not gonna ever have a tax levy to support a community colleges, is 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 just that, it's a myth, I I. Nobody's ever told me where they read that, where they heard it, I I've argued that time and time again, I don't think it's possible when when. When Johnson County generates three point four billion dollars um a year. Um but they're still sending eight mills to the community college, it's gonna, when you're supporting uh higher higher ed institutions, it's gonna take some kind of. That support to to do that, so I want to make sure we illustrate that in every community, every community. Um that I've illustrated on here, that has every community college in the state, um has some kind of a mill rating. Just so you can see that the highlighting is where Cloud County is lined up, again, that's not Cloud County's. Assess valuation, that's the USD assessed valuation, but I wanted to give the mill rate, but the college said that they're at twenty-nine, and. Again, they've been very stable over the last several years, um to do that, and it's it's just what it is, but I want to make sure that we're. We're not making up data, um because there is there's theories out there, all we need to do is that. College just needs a lower level rate, and it's it's gonna solve everything, well, it's it's not really necessarily the case, they have. They have mouths to feed and and students to support and and staff to support as well, but um comparatively, they're kind of right in the middle of the road again. To all our communities that that house community colleges, in that perspective, and. This isn't a conversation about that, but I I do think we need to defend them um as as entities, because we're all working together, um just as a defender. You guys or or what we're all trying to accomplish, so that kind of gives us a a baseline of of. Of data that we're looking at, that we realize that taxes are high, um. They're not the highest, we realize that this is a big ask of our community, but this is also the reason we're talking about sales taxes, because I. I don't feel comfortable. Trying to support this all with a property tax increase, um I guess that at eleven point seven mills, almost twelve mills. Um to try to do this somewhere, and I think I think we're stronger together, um and so, you know, that's the reason, and obviously you guys have. Concerned with that as well, locking up a a mill rate or or a a sales tax. Um component for for twenty-five years, um so I understand that, so I guess, um you know, obviously. We want to try to do the best we can, um we have really, really cut. Uh what we're trying to accomplish at the high school, um but we've also tried to make a gym space, it's something that is they need. And we're we're criticized on that need often, um but we're criticized. On that need, because I don't think people understand how often those gyms are being used, and so that is a challenge and. I I don't know how to get the point across how busy those gyms are, but it's not until. We tell people, no, they can't use them, and and then then it starts to resonate, and it's not that we're trying to be. Jerks about it, it's that they're just they're busy, and so um. We're trying to comment, we ran it out a little bit with our middle school this year, now that we're we were renovating it. We just didn't have access to that gym space, because Cap was in there, so we lost another gym space for practice, we lost another gym space for these things, so. After school basketball practice for some little little league teams, and you know, we're told no, and. We've had to tell some adults no, we've had to tell some volleyball no, and pickleball been told no, nobody likes to be the bad guy, we. We try to accommodate as much as we can, but we're at a point where we're we're telling people no, and I just want to make sure everybody understands the rationale beside it, we're not trying to be. Bad sports about this, we're just trying to figure out how to solve the problem. At some point, we're gonna have to take the nineteen twenty-nine gym out of commission, um and that's gonna eliminate another piece of the puzzle, so. We understand that people are upset about athletic space, but we're trying to address that for both city and school. Um so there's enough gym space from a a rec perspective as well. Is there any questions, and I I'd like to open that and have this as as two-way dialogue.
With a couple questions, when you're talking about um what what you anticipate of being able to accomplish. And if I wrote it down wrong, please, like the thirty million. Um with the HVAC and electrical, what does that achieve the ADA? Compliance that you were working to achieve across the.
It it would, so we're we're just just a rough estimate, we're we're addressing about ninety percent of the areas, so we have two upper classrooms. Where like Gina Kern and Chris Stiles are currently, we just don't have a good method of getting ADA to those locations, so. We are moving their classes down, um down basically on the science wing, um and recreating those labs, um. Then the the art room um on the middle school side has a a lift. Uh that's in there, and and that will that will work for that, it it's not a heavily trafficked area, so um. We're we're not gonna adjust any any at a ramp or anything there, we feel like that's sufficient, um but everywhere in the building. Um where we're having instruction will be accessible, um you know, we look at above the the gym and those those stairs there. Uh where we go to the concession area and that holding area, those stairs are are gonna be there, so. We would have to go back down the hall, and then um there's gonna be a corridor that's gonna go. Um just on the west side of the gym and the the uh the music room that will connect to the commons area. So everything will be uh in this plan um ADA accessible, um. But it it may not be the most direct route, however, it's, you know, a hundred times better than than what we're we're currently dealing.
And in either of these scenarios, um the drawings that are here. The the yellow space is what would be open to essentially the city or the community. On a on a full-time basis.
We want to have that be direct access to to the city, so the hope would be that even while school is going on. You guys would have access to to that space for walking or pickleball or. Or whatever that would be, maybe not even earlier today, even, you know, the the draft of this plan had. You know, some different locker room spaces and restroom, like, I think the stuff uh on that city side could be. Repurposed, so to speak, and and drawn different ways to accommodate like meeting rooms or something like that uh as well.
Would the green space open up to be available to the community after school hours?
Yes.
Would that would that run into challenges if there's school, I I mean, like. So the the question that I'm asked a lot, asked often, when we talk about a community. It's like, what, how do we, how do we formalize the packing order, right, I mean, that's the.
Absolutely.
And so if a school team has it, then it's they're probably gonna get priority.
Correct, I mean, that's, I I mean, that's the way it's designed, you know, we kind of try to follow the model of Manhattan Eisenhower and. Uh on a smaller scale, obviously, um but again, for instance. Probably after school practices would take the precedent that they like until six P M, um and then once six P M hits. Uh then it will be open to the city, now that the caveat with that is is in full transparency. Uh November, December, January, February would be really difficult, um typically on Mondays. We couldn't guarantee everything on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays and Fridays, uh if we host, if we're hosting home games. Um so that would be, that would also be the challenge, and. You know, balancing those schedules, and that's, I guess that's where um I I don't think the community completely understands. Understands what gives intention, we host an event, for instance, even though it's not a basketball court, where we host a a wrestling meet. That this places both boys and girls basketball, so they gotta find someplace to go, um when we host a girls. When we host boys basketball, obviously, we're displacing a junior high practice or 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 so or so. Um whenever hosted events in the evening, that's when we displace those, and that's where we're, that's where we're in the most conflicts. Um and that's why we felt like if at least one dedicated space to the city, um. Court would at least give us something, um because again, we if we just talked about just doing a green space. Uh we're basically on one for one, we're taking one service out, the green space on referential one. On the drawing, if we just want the green space, we're basically um. Going one for one, we're taking one gym out of service and putting another one in, and we still have the same problem, where we still don't have a city. City dedicated space, you know, we feel like even on a Friday night basketball game. The city would still have access to that other side, you know, it's gonna be blocked up, we just don't have our JV basketball game, our JV volleyball game in that space. Um in the green space, so that the yellow space can still be used by the city.
So there's no, there'll be no access from.
There's a, there's a wall in between um on the drawing, um and again. Cost is an issue, so these are all estimates, but I think it's a it's a softer wall, but it's it is a. It's a partition.
So, my question then, how how, tell me how long it's gonna, you can't answer this, I know. How long is it gonna take before the school district says, well, we need that other gym? So, we're gonna use it until six o'clock, then the city can use.
I think, I I think that's all just drawn up, and it it been ran, it's getting much like, uh there's a. An active document uh draft that we have compiled, it's very similar to to what Manhattan's doing, so. Um obviously, with the shared space, there's gonna be some collaboration and trust, and that would again, that would not be the intention that, you know. What our intention would be is if if Chris decides to host a. Fourth grade basketball tournament on Saturday, the goal would be, boy, it'd be nice to open up all three of those courts, this is where. This is gonna be used by the city all day, it's just on the calendar, we know that, it's we adjust, and we adjust to that situation, and even though maybe. Mr. Holmes is gonna have a Saturday basketball practice, or we're gonna find someplace else to do it, because this is on the calendar, we got. Twenty-five teams come to town that are gonna provide commerce um to this event, and we're gonna do that on the same event, if. All of a sudden, you know, we have, we're resurfacing one to the other gyms, it's a call to Chris and say, hey, can we? We get in here Sunday night and get get our practice event, um much like what we're working together as we speak, I mean, it's. It's very similar to what we're doing right now, um we're just gonna have some added space that we haven't had um in our arsenal. But again, I think all that's gonna be drafted in in an MOU um agreement, so to speak. Attorneys will be involved, but we do have a, we do have a template of that already, for what Manhattan is doing, but I. I I can't say that I'm gonna be here forever, so I know over twenty-five years, we need to figure that out, that's why we'll try to put those drafts together.
So you intend then, like during the summer months, when schools are not in session, who? Who's paying the elec- electric bill, the air conditioner?
School district has for fifty years, for whoever, I mean, we have. City groups and rec groups in our buildings throughout the.
Even though that's a dedicated space for the city.
What about staffing and and like a calendar for that city space, and then additionally, um. I know you talked about the wall, but just like the safety of the students in the school, when you have part of your school that have the public has access to. To keep people out of the learning space who shouldn't be.
Exactly, and I think that's that's a conversation Amy and I have had, and again, this is just a draft, and that's why I wanted to do guys' inputs, um the way the walking track is established right now. There's doors there that it would open, so you could actually go completely around the off walking track that would obviously have interaction. You know, what the goal would be um is during school hours, the the doors are gonna be shut, so there's no access uh to the students per se. Um because of that wall, and those doors are gonna be shut, so um we feel like that's it's it's an economical, safe way to do it. Less economical would be like the racetrack that uh that Manhattan does have, um where you essentially just have a walking track around. There where the city is, and you you box that in, but it's up above, um and that elevated track is about a million dollar increase. Um and so, again, those are conversations that. We need to have to, again, we're just trying to do this as economically as as possible, but we. We've already made some concessions, to be honest, that is about a million dollars more to attach the building. To or attach that structure to our current building on that on that north side of that library. Um it would have been less expensive to build a separate structure, um I can't give you all the engineering reasons why, but there was. Some plural walls along the our cafeteria slash library, and I'm not at all. Averse to be able to explain that to you, but there's a reason that engineers were involved in the conversation, um because that was the first. Fix is to save a million dollars and build a separate structure, we were pretty adamant from a school district perspective to attach it. Just so we eliminated that, we're already sending students across the street um every hour on the hour. Um to our C T building, uh which is not ideal, um we didn't want to send kids out the north side of the building, in in addition. Every hour on the hour to P E, um they had to go outside of our security area, so that's that's why that conversation came up, so we are very. Very in tune to that, and and do want to support your guys' conversations and trying to keep our students separately, we spent lots of dollars, controlled access and. Video phones and all that stuff at our entrances to do that, so it's it's a great question, and we do want to address that, and we feel like. With this partition, um although it's a soft partition, uh with doors on the other side, and other partition that. It does, it does put a space in between there, it could easily be a hard partition, um the cost could end up a little bit, but probably not a ton. That that is definitely a conversation.
And is that well removable for that?
If we make it a hard one, it's probably not, but the soft one uh can be, it could be retractable, um. And that's again, the pros and cons of these conversations, when Chris was to host a tournament utilizing three courts going cross-court. It'd be nice to have that all the way up, um so that everybody has access to every place, um. And we have a JV basketball game going on, going the lengthwise the other way, so we have room for spectators, and you guys want pickleball or. Club volleyball or whatever would be, adult volleyball, still going at the same time, that would be where we definitely want the partition down, so.
Well, it's hard to make the space really flexible, but really secure, right, which which give where do you do and and try to achieve? What outcome, like the more flexible it is, the less secure it is, the more secure it is, the less flexible it becomes.
I believe Tucker, um who who's helping us with these designs, said that you could do an opera ball hard wall. Um you know, that could still be moved, but it is a, you know, a. A step wall, which. A, a step wall, which would help for security as well.
And as far as the calendar and, and staffing of that part, how do you navigate that from? I mean, would that be the same, that's kind of the processes now, or separate first, as far as access and use?
Yeah, and I think, uh, you know, I think it's best utilized, and I, I think. Chris and Chad were doing well together now, and again, it all, all depends on. On bodies, we can't, um, bodies being in the same spot forever, so I think that's why that M O U comes in. Very importantly, having that piece in there, but really, I think, uh. If we can control it, if we know what the, what the hard stops are, for instance, we know that. It's gonna be the school district facility in the green until six P M. Um, and typically our, our basketball schedules and volleyball schedules. Um, are, are year, are created years advance, they're on two-year rotations typically, so. Uh, we go to Chapman this year, Chapman comes to our place the next year, so we, we know on, we know probably at least a year in advance, and in some cases, two years in advance. The date, um, that it's gonna be used, we can have that on the calendar, so Chris is very well aware. Um, of what those spaces are, so that they're already pre-scheduled. Obviously, um, I would just have Chris schedule the yellow areas and. Then in those off times when, when Chad has to contact if we. We are hosting something that we would need, the yellow gym once every. Whenever we need it, I, I, I can't imagine we need it very often, but I can't think of an instance we would, but. Again, maybe a gym's down, or we got water or something, we got, had a roof leak on one gym or something, we would need to use it. And we would just try to contact Chad and, or contract Chris to try to figure out a. You know, some kind of a compromise, and we've done that, uh, with the college before too. Um, what do we get in a bind when? Uh, we've had to evacuate our building before for gas, so we practiced at the college on a, on a, on a time or two and. I think they had water on their gym floor and the college ones, or they double booked, I think, uh. A wrestling meet or something, and so cloud give over user gym, so. I mean, in those types of situations, I think those are those one-time things, but I think if we have some general guides. After six is, is when the city will, will have access and then, um, obviously. Other than that, it, it belongs to the school district for, for P E and our after-school programs.
Like Quinn said, the interoperable agreement between, um, the city and the school district in Manhattan. Um, is very descriptive on this, and if you guys wanna see that as kind of baseline to, you know, to, to go from and. They outlined all of this, and I, I recommend reading it if you guys are interested in that. Pass that along.
This, this was maybe slightly off topic, but as far as your, your drop-off at pickup, does, am I reading that correctly that? According to this, that you drive through the parking lot to do that?
That's right, that's the draft we have, and again, this. This model was the one where we thought we could save the most parking. Um, if we've built a separate structure, if we've built the structure away from the building. We save the street, uh, we save Kent Street, but then we, we give up a considerable amount of parking, and we're giving up a little bit of parking, but. Um. The parking has been more of a hit than I ever thought it would. Um, and again, I don't wanna designate as long for parking, because I told you guys that was gonna be a temporary space to start. Um, cause you granted us some. These there to not have to spend two hundred thousand dollars to pave it. Um, and so, uh, it's been, been very, very well received and, and we, we like that, that's been great for those of you that are helping with mentor days and. And those kind of opportunities, band concerts especially, choir concerts, um, anybody coming in on the T Street side has been very. And I, I don't think we give out more than twenty or thirty spots. Um, and again. We can say twenty or thirty spots, the challenge with not having a, a paid parking lot right now is we have people that. Don't, don't park within. Uh, a, a good lines status, so we have people to park. Students are gonna pull stuff all the time, and sometimes they pull in sideways and, or they'll have not quite enough gap for another car, but. I mean, it's, and I can appreciate not wanting to door anything, but sometimes it's just. There's so much distance in between, it's not super, uh, super efficient parking, and once we get lines in, it'll be a little easier for her to, to gauge that.
One thing that I keep kind of forgetting is fifth and sixth will be out of that building and, you know, pickup and drop-off will, will change drastically, um, you know, starting next year.
I think we've just kind of all grown into that fifth and sixth grade mindset that that. That intersection is gonna be a train wreck for about fifteen minutes every morning and every afternoon. Taking, I mean, a hundred and eighty-seven kids out of that mix, um. Which means you're taking typically a hundred and eighty-seven parents out of that mix, I think that's gonna help, help drop off quite a bit and. Again, one of the reasons we felt like it was, uh, a good reason to move to that middle school and to divide that out a little bit.
With fifth and sixth out of the building, are you still gonna move the gyms? All that, but, I mean, cause basically like the walking track isn't gonna be open for anybody until after six, so people that wanna walk in the morning, it's not an option.
I, I, I think we could set up something in the morning, it would be, you know, early, you know, before seven. Um, that we could have that open, you know, for track, and then, you know, when students arrive at seven thirty, you know, then. That, that's gonna be shut off, so, but I think there is some discussion for morning time.
I just think the, like the pickleballers and some of that. Age group that wants to do that sort of stuff in the mornings, um, whether it be early morning, mid morning, i- it's not really. Can help them.
Yeah. As far as fifth grade and sixth grade, fifth and sixth grade are typically not the ones utilizing the, the gym space necessarily, I mean. We have P E space for them, uh, within the concept that, that we have in front of us, but as far as, uh. Our junior high athletic starts in seventh grade, so fifth and sixth grade evening activities are not necessarily, um, taking up. Taking up the gym space of. The fifth and sixth grade piece of this is, um, a little bit irrelevant on the, on the conversation, because they're not really using that, and we do have the gym space for P E. For fifth and sixth grade.
So yeah, you're, I would think that your fifth and sixth grade are gonna benefit more from the after-hours. Accessibility with different club and team sports than they would from the organized.
Correct.
Did I hear you correctly when you started, um, that this is potentially a fifty-year solution?
This is not a fifty-year solution, I, I don't believe, um. I believe, I might have spooked, the forty and a half billion dollar project. We felt like we addressed. All of our I D, all of our H VAC, all of our exterior envelope of the building, and, as well as interior envelope and, and electrical. To reset the, reset the clock on it to kind of make it a new building. Um, this is not, um, I don't think this has, uh, restructuring any or inline plumbing, water, does it?
Neither the twenty or the thirty million doesn't.
So what is the, the livelihood of the solution? I mean, financially, like with these, it's a, a twenty-five year. I guess just a. Bond commitment, um, and then ten year for sales tax potentially, or twenty-five years potentially of sales tax too, so what's the? Like, doing this project, what, what's the value of it long-term? Then, if, I mean, we've shaved off some important elements.
That is a great, a great question and awesome dialogue, and. But I think some of the best minds in our community trying to, to try to solve this, and so. I, I, I think there's a, again, a myth. You know, if we, if we just use our money, um, better, then, then the school can just take care of itself. What we don't have school finances, school finances funding on a year-to-year basis, and we have a certain number of mills that we get to utilize for. Um, like a maximum of eight, two for cap outlay, then you have. You know, the rest of our mill levy is basically stacked in a general fund and R L O B. Um, so general fund in our local option budget. Basically funds, funds the school district to operate for years, so for instance. Ninety percent of our budget, uh, of the nine million dollar budget that we have, we have another. It's really confusing, we have another eight to nine million dollars that's tied up in special ed, um, with our cooperative with our four other districts around, um, our area. That are, are essentially our nine million that we have. Ninety percent of that is, is to pay the people, um, so the leftover ten percent. Is, is what we do for, I mean, much like you guys, fuel for school buses, uh, maintenance, general maintenance on. On s- school buses, um. Professional developments, uh, those kind of thing. Leads us where the extra, extra ten percent goes, so. The thought. That we could pull off. Something along the lines of. Of even five or ten million or two million, um, improvements. Just doesn't exist, and that's why, um, you'll see across the state, you know, their communities that, they'll run some kind of a bond issue about every ten years. Um, almost every school district that. That has facilities, um, decent facilities are, are doing a bond issue about every ten years. So what happens is they try to build a twenty-year fix, and after ten years, the. This bond issue will, will expire, but they've already planned on another one. Uh, but that way they keep the mill rate the same, so. Five or six mills come off, and then, then five or six mills come on. After ten years, five or six mills come off, then five or six, so you can maintain this level playing field to get things, um, to maintain your facilities. Whether it be Clay Center, Marysville, Abilene. Um, I'm just giving you league ones that you're, but they've been able to maintain new first, newer facilities by doing that. Um, over a, over a period of time, so you never have this. This flux of all of a sudden, oh, I'm, I'm coming to the taxpayers asking for eleven or twelve mills. Um. You know, some of that happens, but, um. If you can, if you can control that environment, that is what we're hoping for, so. What we're hoping is this kind of gets us on the right path. You know, forty and a half million would, would have fixed us for a long period of time. Um. But it didn't, it wasn't the car, so it doesn't happen, so now what we're trying to structure is something that gets us maybe. Another ten years in twenty thirty-three, we're gonna have three and a half mil, three to three and a half mills that are coming off. Off the tax holes, cause the, the FEMA shelter will be paid for. So then we're gonna look at probably trying to do something again for that three and a half mills to try to address some of the other. Failing pieces and, um, I mean, just example. We generate eight hundred thousand dollars a year, um, in capital alley, and so in the last board meeting, uh, well, in the last. Five or six for me, it's been, the, the chillers failed at elementary, um, so that's about five hundred thousand, we had another. Uh, H VAC unit that caught on fire on top of the elementary school. These were ones that weren't replaced in the two thousand thirteen bond, cause they weren't in the life yet, thank you. So in, in a matter of a couple minutes, it was six hundred thousand of that eight hundred thousand is gone. Bus rotation, we have, we had two buses on, on plan for bus rotation. Um, everybody bought a bus lately, or fire truck there, they don't give away, it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars by two buses, so. I've already exceeded, um, what I've generated, um, in cap outlay, and then, uh, we still were down just a little bit from last year, because we. Did our super repair, um, to get the raw sewage out of our art room, and so that was another two hundred fifty thousand, so. The hardest thing for me to stomach and, and those conversations is, some people will call that is, is general maintenance. Um. We could see those coming, but they're still on, we can see them coming at some point, but they're still on plan, so there's. You know, we have a plan for bus rotation, we have a plan for those kind of things, but then. Um, we got hit with a hailstorm that you're seeing shingles go on all, all over, all over town right now. Um, flat roofs probably took the worst beating of anybody, if you had a pitch roof. Just sorry, you probably survived insurance, and Amber will probably tell you that. Um, but when we have the square footage that we do with. Four different buildings, five different buildings with flat roofs, um, that took a toll, now we got a million dollars, um, of an insurance claim. But they're not, they're not fully covering all of our depreciated roofs, so. While we're trying to mobilize all of our. All of the repairmen to fix roofs, that'd be the most economical way, but we're gonna have to come up with over a million dollars to try to address. The two million dollars roofs that we got a million dollars for, so we're making choices right now on. Fixing a roof or fixing it, uh, because we don't have that million dollars. Um, to replace that, because our roofs were so deteriorated, because again, we're. We're trying to wait, um, the roofs were part of the, the bond project, trying to fix those, so. I don't want this to come across as a, as a. A violin show and, 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 and a sympathy party at all, it's, it's what it is, and. What, what the challenging piece is, is just like you are trying to figure out ways to. Make your salaries competitive, every time I dip in, out of cap outlay in my general fund, I'm taking something away from the classroom. Whether that be teachers' salaries, whether it's parents, whether that's professional development, um. I've been dipping into that, and we've been able to maintain. At a pretty good pace so far, cause we haven't had. Um, major challenges with that building per se. Um, but as we started forming this conversation, um. Back in twenty eleven, when I started as principal, we were, we're having conversations about what we're gonna do. Had conversations in twenty eighteen, and then, then really got conversations going in twenty nineteen, and then in the ruin of the bond issue. Because we saw these challenges coming. They are here. They are absolutely here and, um. Whether it be the gym floor at the middle school is failing, or a gym floor that, that, that the nineteen twenty-nine gym is failing. Whether it be our H VAC, um, challenges that are failing, our electric. We're running more electricity now than we ever have, because we have a visiting Chromebooks in the building. You know, some of the tech we're running, uh, clear touchscreens, uh, now with interactive boards. We just don't have enough outlets in there, so, um. That your kind of fire chief is pretty generous with us, uh, when there's extension cords. Um, but we're, we're not in compliance on that side of it. We keep saying, well, we're working on it, we're gonna try to do better next year, and those kind of things, so we're just trying to, um. It's getting to a sense of urgency now, we're, we're, we're running a lot more electricity pieces, and we're. Our sewers are failing and our roofs are, uh, in, in not great shape. Um. Sidewalks are given away, we have some exterior envelope, um, challenges with the stone that's coming off, uh, of the high school. Um. All of those things make super titties a little uneasy, and so we're trying to figure out a, a great way to fix that, and. Um, by trying to do something a million dollars at a time, or two hundred thousand dollars at a time, as we have it. Is not keeping up with the demand, and so that is where we're at from a. Financial perspective, um, and I, again, I know what sympathy, I'm just, I'm just telling you what the reality is. It's not a threat, we are, we're a great school district, we're gonna educate every kid that comes through, we're gonna do a great job. And there's no doubt about that, we have great people doing that. Um. I just don't feel like I'm doing my due diligence in the superintendent by not advocating. Or something, um, better for our kids, and again, for Kelly and I, it certainly would be a lot easier, my life would have been a lot easier the last five years if I just. Would have kept on for it and not getting just railroaded, um, like somebody did, that were on our committee. On Facebook and all, all the, all the turmoil, not trying to take anybody's money and, and break the bank for anybody, we're just trying to figure out how to. Make our community or our school relevant, uh, over the next twenty-five to thirty to fifty years.
And I guess my, my issue, of course, is the ten years versus twenty-five. And we've talked about that, I just, I think the voters told us pretty plainly, because that number has, it doesn't change once that, you know, and.
Sure.
Um, it does tie us up for a long period of time, I think that's, I learned after talking to folks, and it just kind of tied their hands. So for me, you know, moving forward here, I just, I wanna be clear, I'm not gonna be able to support anything more than a tenure. And that's just me as one commissioner, but that's.
I, I would, I would echo that, and I think especially if we're looking at this. At the, at the upper price range of thirty million, this does a lot of what we needed to do, and knowing that it doesn't do everything, that you, you probably will be looking at something. You know, to, to be able to have. Greater flexibility at that point to hopefully be of help, but if we, we're, we're already tied into. Twenty-five years, and that really limits the ability to do much there, I, I know that, you know, from these numbers, and you're looking at, you're still looking at a mill increase of, of thirteen mills. Which is a twenty-five over twenty, uh, the twenty million over twenty-five without the sales tax, you know, you're, you're only a mill and a half away from that, but. But being able to foresee that there is maintenance and, and upkeep and remodeling that's ahead, that's not addressed by this, I, I worry about. Locking away one of the resources that very well may be needed at that point. To do some of the work that needs to be done. And, and I think that there's. You know, I think that a lot of what. you know, I think that a lot of what, a lot of what I heard after the election, you know, I think that the cost was significant for a lot of folks, the 30 years was, was significant for a lot of folks. So I, I think that people are not, wouldn't disagree, especially at this point, if something needs to be done. It's, it's about being able to deliver something that's, that's frankly electable, right? Being able, being able to put forward a project that people are able to, to support, you know, that there's not many people anymore that I think, think that we can keep getting by and it's fine. Get more and more people understand the need for for, for work. Just finding that, that point where they're able to support it.
Thoughts or questions? Our board basically backed into this as a 30 million dollar project. And again, goal was to try to make it attractive to the city at the same time as accomplishing our goals. Do you guys have any suggestions um that we can give? When you think it's, is 30 million the number? Is it 20 million is the number? Is it 5 million? Is it, is it, is the amount the issue? Is it athletics face the issue? Is it?
I think people want to, people I think want to have a, a good, good confidence that the, the academic and the um, and the other ADA sorts of improvements um are, are being met. You know, I mean, I, I hear from a lot of folks that they're not denying that the the, the JV gym is, is not, is not viable, right? And I don't think that there's a whole lot of debate about that. Um, and, and I think that there's still, you know, the idea that the varsity gym is able to function as it needs to. So I think there's an awareness uh of the benefit of that. But I think the, the concern that I hear quite often is, is are we really able to, are we doing as much for our academics as we are for the athletics? Being able to demonstrate that, I think is going to be very important for the school district to be able to, to demonstrate. And again, I think that the, the MOU uh between the community and the school is going to be really important. Um, you know, since, since we're having a very honest conversation, I think there's a lot of doubt and skepticism as to being able to have fair access and, and not necessarily between a school and a community. But does, does this team get preference over this team because this coach is a school employee or because this parent is this? And and so there's a lot of, of doubt uh that's been, you know, frankly, just asked as a rhetorical question, um, because obviously I don't have an answer for that. But I think those are some of the concerns of how to provide uh, the assurance to the community that they are getting what they pay for um with, with a, a true community oriented athletic space. So those are some of, I think, the hurdles, the obstacles to this passing. Numbers are, are obscene. Um, but they are what they are and and, and new construction or remodeling construction. I mean, it's all I don't know that 30 is too much. I don't know that 30 is enough. I think it's a, it's a more palatable number than 50. Even knowing that in, in 10 to 20 years, we'll be looking at probably a similar number is what kind of what I would guess anyway. Those are some, I think, the obstacles, but the opportunities for conversation and to have.
I think you have to overcome the fact that, like Chuck says, that people perceive it as what we need these gyms. So we're gonna kind of redo the classrooms. The fact that you did the football field. I know that doesn't, didn't set well with people and the fact that you spent a million, whatever. You know, and so you have to get over that hurdle. And I was on the school board when we did the elementary building. So I know what you're going to as far as bond issues and all.
I have a clue about ball issue. I, I hear that often. I've explained that to a moon in the face.
Well, so I think that it's, it's really, it's really making sure that folks understand the improvements to the academic space, you know? And I think that logistically speaking, you know, I, I think that the, the reality is if we're, if we're redoing the football field, then it makes sense to do the track or if we're doing the track, then it makes sense to do the football field. I think that there's it, it, it makes, it makes some sense. But I think that's why the school district really needs to flesh out and, and over communicate the improvements to our academic spaces and how the improvements to our academic spaces are going to serve our students just as well as the improved convenience for athletic coordination. So if, if anything, there needs to be that over emphasis on, on the academic, the scholastic component to our school uh to better support really the athletic space, which is a potential economic driver. It's certainly a, a, a very good extracurricular activity for our students. And I think it's a really good opportunity for our students to engage. But our students aren't going to school to play sports. Our students are going to school to learn. And so how do we, how do we really then promote and, and demonstrate that emphasis, that focus on our academic space? I think we have more successful students from our school than we do successful athletes. Right? So, so if, if one of these is going to take a hit and we're not going to be able to do as much with one area as we are with another, then how do we, how do we get by with perhaps not as significant athletic space, but really the, the best academic space that we can put forth with this bond. And then as a part of that, we are able to bolster our athletic space. But we have an elementary gym space that, that is functional for the most part. It doesn't have locker rooms and it's difficult to support that. We have an elementary school athletic space that isn't, isn't everything needs to be, but it is going to be viable gym space. We have a varsity gym that is viable gym space. So making sure that, that the citizens or patrons of the USD 333 see the academic benefit to this project is, is going to be crucial for our things success. And I think that's how you, you overcome some of those concerns. Square footage wise, it takes up the most space. So it's easy to see that as being significant, right? So visually. Um, and certainly our conversation tonight is about a community athletic space, right? A community center space. But the bond um is really, that, that is really academic focused or should be academic focused and helping folks see that that's what they're supporting. I think they're gonna have, they're gonna have better, better buy-in from the community.
Just really, we take that um the 1929 gym and use it more for classroom space or PE and not as a uh competition space. I, I think we could probably do something there. If, if we would, um, you know, we, we're, we're talking about core time to make sure we have enough time, but i- if we, would this be more valuable if we um basically took one court out, moved the city piece over and then invested that back into the, the school? Uh, you know, we made enough concessions to try to get, or we had enough space, but you know, we could reduce that footprint. Put that money back into the school and then, and add, you know, back in some of those things that we cut to try to make that allotment. Um, would that be, um, you know, something that would be feasible? I mean, I, I want to right-size this facility. I don't want to cut ourselves short. Um, you know, but, but if that you think, like you said, it is the most prominent piece, but if we would just take that middle piece out and squish it together and have, you know, less of a footprint and
So would that be then that, that, that yellow space would be eliminated then? And then
So basically take the yellow space over left one and then we would just have that, that single core. Okay.
So then you're basically making it the same size as the elementary school.
Ba- basically we, we're taking it one gym out of our, that we can't use for competition, adding one, one four.
Is that find it like financially eliminating one gym? Like what, what does that look like? You know, what's that one gym versus just leaving it as it is?
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, we could look at that. I, I'd have to ask Tucker, but I, I think it's around three to four million.
Is there, excuse me, is there seating in this gym?
So they are um rolling bleachers, but yeah, you can easily flex wherever they're needed.
How, how much?
Um, you know, I think that's kind of negotiable. I, I don't know.
I thought we had like up to, what was it? Hundred?
Hundred, hundred fifty.
But it's, it's like the locker rooms at the, at the elementary building. They were in one of the original bond issues.
Yeah.
You know, took them out because it wasn't ruined. Or people wouldn't support it. We had free land to start with on the first bond issue, but it was too close to the fairground. Well, industrial area they taught. So we had to buy land. People don't think about those things. Sure.
If you took out one of the gym spaces, then what does that do to the community access during the component?
You know, it, it definitely with scheduling is definitely going to be more creative on that. Um, and really that's why we just, we want to right-size this and make sure it's right for the community. Um, you know, um, having these gym spaces, they're, they're going to be used. But you know, if, if the academic space is where we need to, you know, in, invest that addition in, I mean, we can make that work here. And like I said, this is the draft to, to kind of see if you're getting intent on it. It can definitely change.
These are supposed to be competitive gyms. The sitting's only 150 capacity.
So it would not be like our main varsity game. This would be a JV, um, you know, freshman.
So you would still have, I don't know what it's called now, the new gym, the big gym. You still have that in addition to these three new ones.
Well, I guess from a, the school perspective, we would, we would have two, two cores and really the, the, the third gym is a city we would not have access to that.
But you would have the, the big gym that's there now.
Yes, correct.
And then these two additional gyms.
Well, it's, it's one, one, one competition court that you can go cross court for practices on because by the, when you put, when you put to make it a JV gym to play a JV game in there, you're gonna, we're gonna have to go crossways so we can put the bleachers on the side. Yeah, theoretically you could play going north and south and put our hand over spectators. If that makes sense. So we run it east and west and take out two courts like the elementary when you had the bleachers out.
What kind of feedback have you gotten from your teachers for this project?
I think our, our science staff um are just gonna be told if we get anything. Um, I think they've been trying occasionally waiting. You know, I think for the most part, I think uh they thought the first plan um last November was, was going to address it. Um, the staff on, on this end, I think are gonna be, I think they're supportive because they like the, like the feeling that they're gonna have new cosmetic spaces on the inside. I, I think there is some concern that we're not addressing the outside as much. But I do think that they're happy that we're trying to address the electrical pieces. So that we're not running sitting court all over the place every day. So there's just active outlets.
You know, we, we did um a staff survey, uh, kind of talked about what they perceived are the greatest needs. Um, an overwhelming insecurity was top one. Um, but this, this plan would address a secure entrance like we have um at the elementary where public come in on 10th street, they have to go directly into the office. Currently they have access to all the corridors. Um, so we would fix that. And you know, overwhelmingly the, the next biggest item was bathroom. Bathrooms are a, a big deal. Uh, we hear about it all the time. And um, you know, we, we do have significant issues with, with those and um, you know, those would, would also be addressed too. And then um, third thing was just academic space and freshening those up. And you know, uh, they said they would like larger classrooms, but they understand that that is really not uh interested in like.
So the bathrooms would be addressed with this current
Yep.
iteration?
Yeah.
So what plumbing is left behind?
Plumbing. Um, so really, um, our, our sewer, uh, basically in the 1929 um, back to the uh west, um, really we haven't investigated that too much. You know, we did host the wrestling tournament. We, we, we passed, you know, we had 3,000 people in that school and you know, we didn't have any issues. Um, so there, there could be some investigation with, with that sewer. Um, you know, when we surveyed the students, just the, the general taste of the water um is also a problem. You know, we have some aging pipes and minerals, you know, that um, cause that, that, that taste and um, you know, some of that uh plumbing that's behind, you know, in the walls and stuff, we, we wouldn't be able to really address. But you know, through this, we could probably look at, you know, refreshing our, our feed lines for possibly water fountains and, and kind of get some uh quality water for uh those fountain. Um, I say quality, but water that tastes better. Um, it, it's definitely quality now, but uh you know, that mineral taste, it can't be still a little, a little off. So um, you know, fixtures would be addressed uh as far as toilets, sinks and partitions and paint and flooring. Um, but it would be the stuff that, you know, runs uh in the walls and, and down to um, you know, the, the underside of the, the building. That really wouldn't be addressing.
So does this plan move the science rooms down where the weight room is?
Uh, no. So um
Different levels.
Yeah. So it's right above the weight room, part of that. And then um, the current middle school area, that would also be converted into, into science space. But where we're taking walls out and we're having, you know, two classrooms become one. Um, so basically there's four classrooms where you're seeing that weight room just above it. Um, those four would be turned into the two.
Just on the academic space piece, would there be any, any appetite for a sales tax initiative if, if there was no gym space at all, that was all active?
I mean, I, so I think that this city wants to be, I want to be a good partner with all of our organizations and I want to work with everybody that, that we have the opportunity to work with. That the additional the, the JV gym needs to be replaced. So there is going to be some need for some replacement with that. So I don't, I don't know that. I don't know really how to best answer your question. I, I think that we want to, I want to help as best I can. But the whole, but I think that, that ultimately our support is just about putting something on a ballot, right? I mean, that's, that's so it's entirely possible that all five of us are, are one way or another. I think that what, what the district needs to, to really be able to dial in is what are people gonna support? What are people gonna approve? You know, that that's, that's a far bigger question to answer than, than whether the, you know, I think uh limited timeline, limited numbers are, are what has been shared, could be feasible, could be palatable. But what, what are this, what are your patrons gonna support? I mean, that's the, and, and I think that those conversations, uh, I, you know, if I'm in your shoes, I'm, I'm you know, if you, if you voted down the bond, I would love to talk to you. You know, what, what kind of project are you gonna be willing to support? You know, what kind of, what kind of thing are you looking for? Is it more of this? Is it more of that? To get, to get a viable project, us supporting it ultimately is, is good. And I think it's important and from a financial perspective, but if it doesn't pass, then we're in the same position we are now. Right? So what, what variables need to be answered on the district's part about what's, what the citizens are gonna support? 1% over 10 years, use it however you need to. What did the city, what, what do your, what do your parents need? What do the city, what, what do your, what do your parents need? What do your citizens need?
Maybe I didn't listen close enough and I certainly can't see well enough. What's your plan for the old gym?
Um, really, what we probably look at is, um, utilizing that for, um, potentially a wrestling room or dance. Uh, even, you know, right now we have, uh, baseball nets in there. Uh, if they hit, you know, even golf, you can have it hitting net and, I mean, it'll be, you know, wet space, it'll be PE space, uh, and then also it could be, could be some athletic space too, but um, whether it's wrestling or, or not, but, um, just, just not as, as a competition space.
When's your garner, sorry? Um, patron support, turn that into at the moment? You could say we're taking a gym and it's going to be academics.
That's what we did with the last, with the forty, yeah, really, no, that's what we're doing.
We're getting rid of one. We're getting rid of one gym and it's going to be academics because what I've been listening to is a lot, we need more academic space. We prove that we're trying to be very academically. Anybody that's talked to me in the last month knows that my whole thing now is how do we get word? How's care, how do we communicate anything? And I don't know for people to hear, oh, they're getting rid of that gym and they're going to make it into academics. If that's what really matters. I'm not saying it necessarily does, but I'm just trying to think. I think a, a huge challenge of all of this is getting the word out and convincing people and getting people to understand what you're really trying to do and what the truth is. And maybe I'm totally wrong, but, but the academics is a big thing to be able to say, we're getting rid of that old gym, we're turning that into academics. Might be totally wrong of it.
Well, I think that it's a thing, if, if the gym itself, the old gym, there's going to be a lawsuit coming. It's something, if we keep using, it's going to happen. So basically we need it, another gym. That's, you know, now, if we want to go and say, we're just going to build one gym across the street or right where their plans are for three, then I think we need to look at what we're losing out on. And that's the community use of the building. It would, you know, and I, I think if you would take for an example, could the city say, okay, let's just go with one gym, we'll cut that price down. But realize that you're not going to get probably any more use out of it than you're getting now. Does that, I mean, is that right? Does that?
Well, it's, it sounds like that if we, if we were to, even if we were to reduce that middle core, that there'd still be community access to it to a certain degree, um, but.
But we brought, they really aren't building three gyms. You're, you're building one competition gym. Right? And I mean, it can be used the other way.
Right.
I think if elementary building can use both directions. So.
You're exactly right, Marsh. And that's the challenge. And we tried to illustrate that in the last bond issue and then, um, I was told I wasn't transparent because it's actually three gyms. When I was trying to explain that it's,
Yeah.
it's really two. And so that's why we, we're trying to be transparent with everything. So we, we tried to put them all there to make it right, to make sure that I am being transparent because I was, excuse me, last time I'm not being transparent. So I'm not saying it's you guys. I'm just, I don't know how to communicate. There was such a a powerful negative piece on it. I don't know how to, how to recreate it, so to speak.
Other than take those crossways gyms out of your college.
Yeah, yeah, and.
I mean, that, because you're really needing this one for competition.
And seating would be allowed. You have seating that way, otherwise seating would not be.
But looking at it, it looks like, oh, there's three gyms and stuff, which it really isn't. So.
Correct.
You know, your, your comment about the academics is a hundred percent true. But I think there's a way we can also tie the athletic piece and the success and the academic role. And, and I think there's kids we can use. I think there's examples we, there's studies we can use. And I think the more we can do that and show that correlation, I think that will help. I also believe a hundred percent that there's ways we can work our schedule where you can have more access. Because we don't need P E classes until maybe ten in the morning, ten thirty in the morning. Giving you from, you know, six whenever they want to open until, you know, a little bit more time and access to more courts. And when I have football or whatever you got going on in the morning, more walking space and everything. I think there's ways to do that or do. And so there's, there's flexibility there and, I mean, shoot, I, 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 I think this is, you know, a fix, but then I think you're right, Brandon. I think you take one gym and say, we're going to use this for academics. I think that's always something we can discuss too, so.
I think there, there are people that understand the, the need and the benefit for improved athletic space. So I don't think that that needs to completely disappear from the conversation, but from, from what I've heard, that's been the, the majority of the conversation, right? And so there, I think that, that it doesn't, it doesn't, the, the, what I am, what I hear most often is that there's not enough conversation about how we're improving our science labs. Like we're, we're building them out, two classrooms are becoming one. This is what we're, we need to over-communicate how you're improving our traditional classroom space, how we're improving our science labs. Look at the innovative way we're using the JV gym now as this, uh, learning lab. Or this is what we're doing with, you know, pretty much that Western, uh, suite of classrooms. You know, that, the, the athletic side will sort of sell itself because there's enough of a, a recognition that we need that. So let that go on its own with, with the focus on this is how we're fleshing out uh, our, our, all the, all the things that, that, the other things that we're here for. Yes, this is the largest single footprint, right? The, the, the gym space is always going to be your largest single footprint. But this is what we're doing as a district to improve these academic spaces and, and, and paint that picture. And, and have mockups of what this science lab looks like, the, the model of what, this history of the, you know, how are we going to take this old classroom and, and maintain its classic style, but improve its, its aesthetics.
That was one of the first things, if I remember correctly, that was about that. When this all started, it was the science classroom.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they were, when they do experiments, they're standing on top of each other to, to do an experiment and that and so on and so. This is where it all kind of started. And then there's been, of course, all kinds of, you know, offshoots from that. But, uh, yeah, it, that was the main reason, uh, for the whole startup.
Because people don't know that.
Yeah, right.
John, so that's what I think Chuck's saying, you need to go out, add your explanation level.
We want your support too.
Yeah.
As, as a city captain, we didn't, I don't know.
Well, I think just from the community aspect, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't have any community activity space for people of all ages to participate. That has been the school district space for a hundred years. And the school district's been able to provide that for the community. And every other community that's this side has some type of a community participation space that's available to the community. That's usually a cooperative agreement between several different entities. We don't have that in Concordia at all. They just rely on the school district to be able to provide that. So I think the conversation has to go somewhere, not far on the life issues too. And being able to provide that type of quality of life for our community. And that type of, you know, activity communal space that people have, they don't want to be doing the things other than the people's experience. Because it is a lot more than that.
Sure, my. My daughter had basketball practice, I think from seven thirty to eight thirty on Sunday night. Uh, so we're real aware of the limited time windows, uh, for what limited space we have. So I, I do think there's a community of life issue or, or a quality of life benefit to having, having that. But again, I think that's what's going to, my, my pulse is that that's, there's, that's that, there's not so much a disagreement about that. There's the question mark about the other, right? So I think that that's where we've, we've struggled to see that this is going to have, like this, there's a benefit for this. There's a need for this. We, we know that. I think that anybody that does any kind of club team sees that and feels that. We just need, I think that people want to see that really fleshed out on the academics. And, and what we're doing at the district to support the academics, what we're doing as a district, not only physically, but, but from a curriculum standpoint, from how are we, how are we really maximizing our students' athletic or our, their academic access and resources as much as the other? We s- we see a lot of that and we feel a lot of that, but we aren't seeing as much of this, I think. And I think that's what people are looking to see.
Sure. I, I guess from, you know, I, I, I think we can definitely, you know, paint that picture and show that we are putting stuff, a lot of this money is going into the classroom. And we can, we can verbalize that. We can, you know, do some proof of concept of what that's going to look like. Um, on this draft, um, of the, the rec facility, I mean, you know, if we kind of put the, uh, the agreement aside, but a- as far as the, the layout, we feel like this is something, um, that we can work with. And, you know, do you feel like it is, uh, kind of the need, um, the health and wellness of the community this plan, um, in their best interest or, or are we missing anything that?
Another walking track is important. Community access is important. Um, I, I, me, I think logistically having it being adjacent makes, makes sense as opposed to reducing parking. As, as a parent who will be dropping off a child in at least seventh and eighth grade, well, maybe seventh grade, the idea of driving through a parking lot terrifies me.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, I think kids walking into the street, who, I mean, as, as good as you, the staff you have trying to regulate traffic on eleven, kids walking in a parking lot is going to be, uh, I mean, if we're worried about a lawsuit in the JV gym, I think having a drop-off in the parking lot would probably be something to look at. But I think those are things that you can push around and, and move around pretty easily. Yeah. I mean, I say that and I'll have a clue. I just move it over with my finger.
I've talked to several people, rec people that have facilities with a ground level walking trail and they all hate it. There's so many complications, the people on the track, trying to cross the track. Um, and those, they all say they wish it had elevated. I know that's a lot more money, the elevator and stability and all that stuff. Um, I don't think there's any way you can close off a track on the ground level between school and community space. And there's no way to put it off. I think you have some options elevating it where you probably wall the inside of that track over the school system. Um, obviously that's more money also, but, uh, and you also gain, by doing that, you also gain a second level of, um, room space, community space, um, gathering area, because you have a second level above the, uh, the entryway anyway. So I think there are some more options there, but obviously it all comes down to money. The dollars, I do. Um, I just have not seen a pleased way of the ground level walking trail.
If I remember correctly, even when we toured, um, Highland, I, that, that comment has six in my mind because I have this, that single level facility.
You get more people there running than, you know, we're talking about the older generation of walking. Yeah, you're not running to people, but you start adding people looking jogging, running. It comes in dangerous issue. And you've seen it at college. Time and time again.
When you talk about, I guess, just, um, proposing things to people, I mean, I know this plan's just for us specifically, but, I mean, it, because it is highlighted, like it's highlighting the gym space. But if, you know, if you have the ability, and, and I don't know what something like that would cost, but if you have the ability to show, what, what it actually is now versus what it could do. So do like a three D or walk through like they do when you, um, a virtual tour of a home. Um, you can see what it is currently, which, I mean, I know you guys invited the community, um, a couple of times into the, the school to be able to walk through and see that, which is different than what it looks like during the day when students are in there. And all those extension cords are strung out across the building. And you do go into the bathroom and there's no stall doors. Now there's some, you know, some of the, um, the things that are mitigated with this plan, you can do a virtual walkthrough theoretically of what it will look like before and after. Um, the academic space also. And then along with the science suite, and what does that do? What does that look like? Is the science program going to be better because you have a better space? Is it, you know, is there more STEM activities that are, you know, like right now, I know, like the middle school goes um, and does a lot of STEM activities in Slidmore, right? That, uh, which is a tremendous thing. Is that something that, not obviously for fifth and sixth grade, but are those some of the things that are going to be brought into um, this learning space also? Like, you know, focusing more on the academic, um, part of it. And I, I definitely agree that driving through the parking lot is, um, a difficult situation already, like dropping off, um, kids now. The kids are walking over. There's no crosswalk, um, from the parking lot. And so you have people come in and vetting through cars all along that whole street, which, which is already dangerous. So.
Yeah, we could even have, uh.
There, there's other options that I don't, you know, a circle or there's other opportunities. It's not that particular design. But, and also, you know, it is frustrating, like, you know, the, the, although I've, I've heard a lot, I wasn't part of this community prior, but I've heard a lot about, um, you know, like the elementary school bond taking so long to pass and, and you're talking about the every ten year thing. But like the high school has gone so long without, I mean, it's just like, you know, it's just like buying an old abandoned house and like starting over from scratch. So when you tell people something's going to cost fifty million dollars to fix because it hadn't been fixed already, nobody's been doing X, Y, Z all along to make sure that, you know, okay, this year we're going to do plumbing and electrical or whatever, like doing those, those ten-year plans along the way so that we were never in a position like this in the first place. Granted, I can guarantee that those things would have passed either. But it, it's like all of now come to a head where something has to be done. And then what's the best solution? And, and I know you guys have kicked that around and pondered it and everybody has a, a variety of opinions about it, but it, it is, it is true that something does have to be done about the academic space. The, the gym is dangerous. Um, and if you could do all that for free, I guarantee everyone will support you. So.
You're funny.
It's just my kids, right? Sorry. Any other questions, comments? Do you guys get the feedback that you need and?
I believe so. Any next step that you guys feel adamant about that you would like to see, um, from your perspective?
Not.
And obviously I think the virtual. And obviously, I think the virtual piece may be showing. Like what, what you said is trying to illustrate what the academic space looks like. I guess the, the challenge, and that's why we're here, is just the conversation, the challenge is to try not to focus on the athletic pieces. But yet make it attractive enough to raise the, the track so it's an attractive fit for a community perspective. And, um, the access and, and those kind of pieces too. So trying to wrestle at the same time, uh, for you, I think, is the, the other piece that. And I mean, I want you to sure, can, can it be done? Can it be done to try to collaborate with the needs of both at one? At one swoop, you know, and we, we started with this at, in early conversations in, in eighteen, in twenty eighteen. Trying to figure out how like the college and the school and the, the city could all work together. We had drafts of this and we went to Highland, you know, we, we looked at a, a great big indoor track space. With courts in the middle, all in one level, and we, we kicked those ideas around. And then we've, we've migrated to the community facility team and we, we added gym space along so we could coordinate gymnastics. We have a lot of kids involved in gymnastics in there for you. And we wanna make sure we had enough space to put the mats out so we could accommodate that. Gymnastics really is a school activity, but it was something passionate about some of our people in the community facility committee. So that extended out, um. Obviously pickleball and those kind of things are, are passionate for our community. What is, what is the temperature on that? Is it, is it something you guys wanna continue to investigate as, as a whole? Or do you, in your heart of hearts feel like it's a, a better scenario? Um, attacking this from just a community facility where you have your own piece? Or it's your own doors that you're opening and you, and you can have twenty-four, seven access as, as you see fit? And we're not, um, we're not in the middle of your space and we need to figure out our own way. I, I wanna make, I just, I'm just, I just wanna ask that just to see what your temperature is on that piece.
I don't know that we have enough information to make that decision. I know we don't have a, a preliminary of what it would take to run it on our own. I mean, the attractive part of this is that you guys would be doing the operations and there's a tremendous amount of savings there. So I don't think we, I mean, I don't think I have enough information to make that call the standalone as a better option. I mean, you're asking, you're kinda asking two different things. You're asking us how, if we would support it as a voters. But tonight, you know, the ask is, would you support putting it on the ballot? You know, it's not, those are just two different. We have two different questions.
Yeah, and I think that, that anytime in our, in, anytime the community our size, looking at the numbers we see. Anytime that any one of our primary organizations can find some efficiency. That we should work towards that, in which way we can, whether that's between the college and the school district. If that's between the, the city and the school district, anytime we can find efficiency, it's, it's a good thing. Uh, making sure that we get the yield out of that at the same end. So we can, making sure that we, we benefit from the yield and find the efficiency. Where is that Goldilocks though? I, I would also agree with, with Ashley then, and that as much as I revel in the power and the authority I have with this gavel. Right? Us approving this just puts it on the ballot. And so at that point then, I'm, I'm one vote out of anybody else that shows up to vote. And so if I'm thinking about what are the next viable steps, that's where I think as a district. You guys, you'll work to, to paint the picture of what this project looks like. The benefit that it would have for the community, you know, engaging with, you know. And I'm glad Carmen's not in the room, so I hope that I say this lightly. I know the pickleball is just the bee's knees right now. But it, it may not always be. And so catering a facility specifically for pickleball may not be in a really. But how do we have a community space that is adaptable to whatever that is? Does it make sense to do it? I don't know. Does it make sense to do it as part of a, a collaborative project? I don't, I don't know. Um, but what are, what are our citizens gonna support? And so then I think reaching out again, so you don't, you don't necessarily, if, if folks are willing to support the yes votes. That supported a fifty million dollar over thirty years, that's not my target audience. The voters have said, no, I won't support that. Those, those are the engagement that we need to see. What, what is it about that? And what would it take from your end? Those, those are the folks that we need to get by in from. Those are the folks that we need to see whether this plan would meet those needs or not. And then at that point, that's the votes that are gonna support this thing, whether it's on a ballot. You know, fine, put it on a ballot, but that doesn't, that doesn't get us where we need to be. And I think engaging those folks is what's gonna get us where we need to be.
And I have another question.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, if in this plan where the city has a designated space. Who's gonna do the maintenance on that? Who, who takes care of that building? Is that in the agreement? That, that city, if it needs, if it's brick, if it needs tuck point, is that the city's responsibility to do that in the building? Or is a unified district gonna do that? It's all taxpayer money, so.
I think for the most part, the district would take care of that, much like the agreements we have right now with. With ball fields and tennis courts and, and those kind of things. We kinda have that agreement that, that we kinda have that shared space now. Oftentimes with the tennis courts, the funding was not available to get the tennis courts in a playing condition. So we, we wrote a grant and we contributed fifty thousand to get those in playable condition. Same thing happens oftentimes with, with a softball and baseball complex. You know, I feel like we try to be good stewards by buying a scoreboard with the softball field. Because we utilize it too. Um, Chris and I worked really well together. We contributed to the, the main field. Obviously with the Turk Project, but before that, we had a, you know, our students were, were the ones, you know, packing the pitcher's mound. And, and repacking those things, so, um, and then also buying a scoreboard, helping buy this scoreboard for the main baseball field as well. So, you know, I would hope that there would be some collaboration. You would hope in the first ten to fifteen years, there's not gonna be too much maintenance on that. But again, it's gonna be a, a singular HVAC system that's gonna feed the full, full complex. So we have just as much interest in it as you do. I mean, where, where the vents are. I don't wanna put a line there while this fence not working, right? So it's like, you know what I mean? It's HVAC and plumbing is all gonna be incorporated into that. So I, I feel confident, you know, and how we can support that, um, from a school perspective.
We'll have staff in the building, you know, cleaning, you know, bathrooms by one end anyway. It won't take too much more to, you know, take the other side.
Of it's thinking more of the long-term maintenance.
Yeah.
That you need a new HVAC, split cost to the city and.
Really, it seems to look at that MOU from Eisenhower, that, or, or any of the other districts. And I think that there's some foundation that we could borrow from to see, um.
Tell me what's your timeline? Are you looking at a ballot in August or about November of this year or of twenty twenty four?
I think initially we're trying to figure out a way to do something in August. I don't think that, I don't think our timeline is gonna, to, to work for that. I think it, it would be probably November. Just, it's trying to figure out how to get, uh, again, transparency to try to figure out how to get feedback. On a plan that's not a plan and how to get feedback on a cost that's not necessarily a cost check. Is, is it gonna cost me two hundred dollars a year on my poverty tax without sales tax? Or they're gonna cost me, you know, a hundred fifty dollars a year with sales tax? Trying to be transparent with stuff, cause again, as we put ideas out, we wanna make sure that we're being consistent. Cause there was, there was enough confusion, um, out there. And, and again, the, the whole point of transparency was to try to have this open session. So we, we kinda talked through the challenges here, because again, trying to put out a survey to our staff right now. And with some unknowns is, I guess, is really challenging, um, to see what, what they would support. Will they support this exact concept? Um, I mean, I think that, that would be a valid question. Um, is that too much? Is that too much athletic space? Can we explain that enough in a survey to understand that, well, part of this is also city space? Can, can that be, can that be communicated well enough to get accurate data on the survey? To, to be able to share that, cause then I, what I don't wanna do is get it put on a survey. We think we're moving in a certain direction. And then we shift things around quite a bit to, to accommodate, um, the needs. Then, then the choices that the constituents make, um, to do that. I, I'm trying to figure out what the car before the horse is, so to speak. That's what, we really struggle with that. Um, trying to figure out how to get that community input. Is that, is that a fair question? Does that make sense? Or am I making it too complicated?
Well, I think your staff, you have enough in-service days. That you ought to be able to explain a concept to your staff. So then they can answer the survey that. Even if you take a survey that day, if they have any questions, then you're there to explain it to them. I mean, it, it seems as a hatred that you've got a lot of in-service days anymore and.
I wish we didn't have that. I mean, I wish we could be educated. There's.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that now. But like I'm saying, you know, why not hang it on to the end of an in-service or the beginning? They're required to be there, so. You gotta be able to tell them all the same thing at the same time.
Getting, getting that feedback from, from your, your staff. And, and again, I think it's the, it's the note voters that need to figure out, you know, so even. Because I think, understanding that getting a plan really dialed in is, is gonna be difficult. Um, and I appreciate some of the reservation about modifications being made after those conversations. But I think that's, all of this is dead in the water if it doesn't pass a vote, right? So figuring out what it is they're looking for, what it is that they would support. That's, that's gonna help, I think, shape whatever plan you have. And so it is, it, it's, it's, it's good to have this as, as a talking point. It'll be good to have some of that information fleshed out as far as what we're doing to bolster the academic space. So you have a, a, a pretty rough ballpark idea of what that's gonna be. And then you engage and, and extend that invitation, extend several invitations to any and everyone. That was not in support of this, to attend a meeting, to, to come and talk with you, talk with the board. To figure out, if it would have had this, I would have been on board. If it would have had that, I would have been on board. I didn't feel like there was enough of this. I, I don't know how many you would get, but whatever, my best feedback is from a critic. It's not the feedback I want. It's not the feedback that is pleasant or palatable. But it's the feedback that gives me the best idea of what I could be doing differently. And I, I, I don't, I don't benefit as much from folks saying, man, you're doing great. One, I'm not sure about that. I'm trying. But the folks say, hey, have you looked at this? Hey, you ought to be doing that. They may not express it in a very palatable way, but that's the information I need that's gonna help me be more successful. And so those, though, that's, that to me, if I'm wanting to pass this, that's, that's what we're gonna need to see is, is a picture that looks forward, looks, looks for that feedback. On our part, whether we could support that or not, I, I, I think there's some, you know, wanting to make sure that, that things are what they need to be. But, but again, putting it on a ballot doesn't get it done. That, that in a way is probably one of your easiest steps moving forward. It's getting the voters to, to back it, that we need, and we need to figure out how to do that. This, the school needs to figure out how to get the voters to support it, because work needs to be done. And there really isn't a disagreement about that. I, I don't hear any disagreement about that. I mean, I had an HVAC contractor that sent a message to another guy who went to high school and said, I don't know how we did this. He was working in the rest rooms. Trying to work in one of the stalls and we were trying to figure out how they were able to manage it in high school. Well, we weren't quite as big as we are now, but, uh. So there's an awareness even from folks that were, you know, had reservations that we need to do work, getting it to be a passable point.